Very difficult chapter title for me. There are some times, yeah.
Okay.
I don't really have all the answers.
All right, I'm ready. Good morning, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Riceinger. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the Baltimore City Council. We are here this morning to conduct a 19th work session on City Council Bill 12 dash 0152, which is transform Baltimore zoning.
It does.
During our 18th work session held on Thursday, November the 13th, we worked on Title 13, which was plan unit development, on pages 199 through page 212. Today, we will continue our review of Title 14, Title 14, which is use standards, starting on line one of page 213, and we will work on as much as we can during today's session, which is for two hours. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the bill by reviewing it page by page, starting with Title One and continuing through the bill in the order that is written. City agencies and the public will be asked to participate by raising their questions or comments as the committee is discussing the page they have a comment or question regarding. This is not, I just want to reiterate, this is not a hearing. So, you know, as I stated earlier, if you have a question on the amendment, or if you have an amendment that you want to present, just try to focus on that amendment and don't go on to anything else that might pertain to a hearing, because we've had enough hearings. So, right now, it's on a work session. I encourage everyone to visit the city council website, which is www.baltimorecitycouncil.com, to stay updated with the section of the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee is working on each work session. In addition to the currently scheduled series of work sessions, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will likely hold a hearing and work sessions. Information about those will be distributed to the public as soon as dates, times, and topics are selected. Again, please check the Baltimore City Council website for the most up-to-date information. If you are unable to attend a scheduled work session and you wish to provide written comments and/or amendments, please mail it to the Office of Council Services, attention to Jennifer Coats at 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, Maryland 21202, or email jennifer.coats@baltimorecity.gov. One grand rule is to, please turn off your cell phones, smartphones, to give, or put it on vibrate, to give courtesy to those people who are going to testify. At this time, we have to introduce my colleagues. To my far left, to my right, is our Councilman Warren Brants.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Directly across from him is the new member of the Land Use Transportation Committee, Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my second left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Chairman, welcome home.
Thank you. I won't go far as back as home, but to my immediate left is Councilman Jim Craft, who is the vice chair of the committee.
Thank you, Vice President.
We're also joined by Ricky Spector, the dean of the council. Also from the mayor's office is Angela Gibson. And to my right is Kara Kuntz from President Jack Young's office, and also behind her, to my right, is Mr. Paul Plymouth from President Jack Young's office. We also have with us John Willis, who is the legal representative for the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We also have entering Councilwoman Sharon Gray Middleton, who's a committee member. And at this time, we will start. Yeah, yeah, I got it. And also, to my right, who is my staff person to the committee, and also the rock of this committee, is Ms. Jennifer Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, I think we got all that here. As I said earlier, we will start, we'll go page by page. Right now, we are on page 213, Title 14, this is use standards. We are joined by Councilman Bill Henry, just coming in, entering the chambers.
Yes, the chair.
We're Title 14, use standards. And the purpose of this title is to set forth additional requirements for certain permitted and conditional uses found within the district use tables. These standards are intended to ensure that a use is compatible with the surrounding area. So, if there's any, anyone have any?
I want to talk about it. Huh? I want to talk about it. Yeah. Yeah, you want to talk about it?
Okay. Councilman Craft?
I guess I should give out my chair, but I won't. The issue is my mic is kind of close to you. You're not going to look good.
Okay. I brought this up at our last hearing, and I don't have any particular wording for this yet, but it's conceptual. It's conceptual to the extent that I deem the dealing with liquor licenses conceptual. And that is, I have a number of adult uses in my district. They're not in the adult entertainment district, which I would call the block as the adult entertainment district. And I wish we had a really cleaned up, sophisticated, great adult entertainment district, which we do not, so we could move all of these places into one area and have a first-class area rather than the dump that we have. But, that being said, I would like to, I would like to consider a phase-out of those adult uses that are not in the adult entertainment area. So, in essence, if they're not in, if they're not on the block or in that area where we have these single uses, just like we're doing this with the liquor licenses and these certain types of liquor licenses, we're saying they're phasing them out within a certain period of time. They either got to, in these instances, they got to move them or lose them or whatever. So, it's a concept. I'm not quite sure of the wording about it, but I've been trying to, I've got one in my district that, I mean, I've been as creative as possible for 10 years, trying to make deals, trying to sell it, relocate it, everything that we can do. We can't do it, and it causes persistent problems for us. I got another one who are, they are absolutely great neighbors. They don't bother anybody, but you can't treat one way and not another, and it's not like you've got 100 of them like you have at a liquor store. So, just a thought for consideration.
Councilman Henry, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is an intriguing idea, but if we're going to do that, then why not take this opportunity to identify another area that is, okay, this is, can I yield to Ms. Feinberg from planning?
You finished, Councilman?
I would like to hear what she has to say first.
Bye, and then, so, adult entertainment, if I understand Councilman Craft's notion, I think that would go into Title 18, because the establishments that you're referring to are what we would call legally established, non-conforming uses, similar to some of the liquor stores. So, just as a note, that's probably the place for it. And I think to Councilman Henry, this code as drafted does create the adult entertainment overlay and only maps it in the existing area out there on Baltimore Street, the existing two blocks. It is, the text is written in a manner that it could only be mapped in a C5, which is downtown, and it can only be, so to expand it beyond the way it's introduced to this council could only be done by the council, because it's a zone. And right now, we just introduced it as-is. So, you know, if the council wants to expand, you know, that would be a map piece to expand the AU overlay.
So, then, Mr. Chair, then this is, this is kind of what I'm, what I'm thinking, is that what my colleague is proposing is phasing out individual businesses that are elsewhere in the city outside this area, but in the way that we're doing that with the liquor stores, technically, they don't have to go away as much as they have to move to somewhere where they're legitimate. But if we restrict the total area to where they could move to, to just this existing block where there isn't a lot of room for expansion, then I fear we might run into complaints. But if we created additional areas, maybe that are out in current industrial areas or someplace where they're not going to bother people, then, then, and I don't, and I don't mean to, I don't, I don't mean to say that we would make them permitted in a particular zoning category as much as take advantage of the adult entertainment overlay to just carve out specific areas where the council people for those districts are comfortable with the idea that this is someplace that the businesses could move to, just so that we are actually legitimately giving these places an alternative to being where they are. Because I just, I wonder if we, if we say, "We're phasing you out and you have two years to move, but the only place you can move to is a block that is already full of businesses," then somebody's going to say, "That's not really an alternative."
Yeah, I think that, I mean, when we hit Title 18, we've got, you know, time to look at that. I think it is, I mean, it is a good point. Councilman Mosby, and then Councilwoman Ricky Spector.
I just wanted to, thank you, Council, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to try to understand, what are we comparing when we talk about liquor stores versus these adult entertainment establishments? And, you know, as it relates to the sheer volume, like, how many one-offs are we talking about that's outside of the block? I mean, are we talking five? Are we talking 10?
Yeah.
They're probably in the range of 10 citywide. I would say we could look at that. I know there's a couple, there's, there's one up here on the JFX, I guess that would be the 12th district. There's three or four, three maybe in the first district.
I have one in 10.
Yeah.
Are we talking adult?
Adult, existing, non-conforming adult entertainments.
Non-conforming?
In other words, everything outside of downtown is by definition non-conforming. So...
I have one.
Okay, so, probably 10.
So, the point, one, looking at it from a concentration perspective, I think it's not the same argument as liquor stores. Functionality, I think we're trying to do the same thing as trying to push or ensure that from a zoning perspective, we control, you know, the types of uses in non-conforming type of spaces. But with that said, and echoing back on Councilman Henry's point, it seems very difficult to provide a logical opportunity for those 10 businesses or 15 businesses that are spread out throughout the city to all converge on the block or somewhere around the block. So, that's the only thing I would try to caution and try to say, that we would really have to try to develop a realistic plan that shows that those individuals and those individual spaces would be able to mirror the types of spaces that they have, the types of parking lots they have, the types of amenities that they currently have, to see if they could fit in a place like downtown.
Councilman Spector, and then Councilman...
You know, I recently heard, "A vision without a plan is a hallucination." I just, when it comes to a liquor license, if the state law doesn't change, you have to move that license to the same legislative district. So, how are you going to be able to find a new place for them to be? So, visions that don't have a plan are hallucinations.
Councilman Craft, then Councilwoman... Sharon Gray Middleton. Let's go with Sharon, let's go to Councilwoman Middleton, then we'll come back to Councilman Craft.
I first of all agree with my colleague, Councilman Mosby, with some points, but I also want to, want you to be mindful that there's some new type of live entertainment, dancing venues that are, are kind of starting, and I can give some examples, if you know where Wabash Avenue is and some parts of Rice's Town Road, where there's an abundance of auto dealerships and, you know, auto body repair shops, and they're transforming those venues into nighttime live entertainment and charging fees and, and, you know, for dancing and so on. So, we try, we have to try to figure out in the language to, you know, get around that. Of course, right now, this is illegal, so I've been able to kind of temporarily put a halt on some things, but they are working on going through zoning and trying to get the place zoned to, to continue to have those kinds of things that take place. So, we need to, you know, be mindful and think about how we can control that as well.
Thank you, yes, you want to?
After I clean up the mess that I just made here, right? Knocked a drink all over the table.
He says drank, he means a soda.
Those have come by, to smear your notes on.
For all of those who love to hear all my notes, I just lost most of them, so.
They'll be very happy on the block.
Mr. Chairman, if I can pick up one second here, I do want to pick up on that thought. I think we've got this now.
Take away your, let me take away your cane.
Yeah. Get anything refillable away from me. Okay. Okay. All right. So, as I said when I initiated the conversation, it's conceptual, and I was talking about a concept. I didn't say that I had any particular language. It was a thought about a concept with regard to this. And I think that Councilman Henry picked up on my overall, my greater thought, which was where Ms. Feinberg went. And that is, well, when we get to Title 18, I really think that, or what I was going is, we should examine the whole thing of where they're located, whether we should have a new location, whether we should have a couple of locations to concentrate them. Following up, and I hadn't thought of the thing that Councilman Mosby mentioned, but when he said about parking and stuff like that, I mean, I've got one in a residential neighborhood that sits on a street corner where there is no parking, you know? I've got, huh? They'd love to move, we just been, like I say, that's the one we've been trying to move for 10 years. We haven't been able to move it. And they, they do. And the liquor license, and then the, and the liquor license issue is a, is a issue that deserves consideration. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. When we get to Title 18, we can look at it in more depth, but I wanted to get the thought on the table so that we could discuss it. So, thank you.
Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else on page 213? Anyone else have any amendments or comments on the council? Anyone from the audience on page 213 with amendments? We are now on page 214. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes. Banquet halls.
If the line 13?
Yes, banquet halls 14 dash 302. Long story short, I don't have any changes to the use standard that's laid out. I would like to add to it. The problem is banquet halls traditionally in Baltimore, where there are a problem is where someone who owns a facility rents out to a promoter who is, exists only in cyberspace. If he's a real person, we've never met him or them. So, they advertise and sell tickets online, they sell tickets at the door, they come in, they've rented the facility, they find a nonprofit to front for them, who gets a little bit of a kickback. They then swamp the place, make their money, "Please come," and it ends. In, in my district, more, it ends with a shooting, this was two years ago now. So, these findings of fact for approval of the land use are to put some more responsibility on who owns the facility, because that's a person with a real body and responsibility that's not living in cyberspace, but amongst us, or at least his facility or hers is there. So, what you see before you is our proposed findings of fact for approval of the use of a facility as a banquet hall, and they include adequate off-street parking. I'll just summarize. First of all, it would be minimum 300 capacity, so you can't even get it if you're not really have a, have a capacity of 300 or more people. We don't want these things in little corner locations. Second, you'd have to therefore have a off-street parking of 150, or something within 1,000 feet you have under contract for parking, that the owner of the hall provides direct supervision of all events. They don't just latchkey the facility and walk away. They are responsible and have to testify to that for direct supervision of all events at the facility, and that they are the ones who have to engage the private security, because they can write that into the rent, but at least they'll be there and though private security is working for owners. And then contracts for events with, with these promoter people, or with the nonprofit fronting for them, will include charges for overtime staffing of the facility owner. So, that would be written into the rent. And then, the owner provides written evidence that the local police, every time, that the local police district commander is advised that a, an event is coming, has approved the use, and that, that he will, a finding of fact is that the zoning board would have to ascertain that the owner will pledge always to advise the local police commander in advance of any event, because that has proved to be a problem. All of a sudden, something erupts, nobody even knew there was an event going on. So, and then, I add that after two disruptive events within six months, as verified by that police commander, the zoning administrator will terminate the use and occupancy permit as a banquet hall. That's it. Yeah.
Councilman Craft?
Mr. Tavala, you have a copy of this amendment?
Got it.
Okay, so, I'm looking at where it says, the police, number five, the owner provides written evidence that the local police, police district commander has approved this use. Didn't we just get a, an opinion from the law department that we cannot tell the police department that they have to give approvals, and we cannot put things before them, require them, requiring them to approve actions or make decisions? Didn't we just go through this?
We did, we certainly gave you that opinion, Councilman.
Huh?
We certainly gave you that opinion, and...
Wouldn't that prohibit us to...
Well, we are, we are, we, we would be constrained by five, but...
They would be constrained by five, correct?
We are, we would be constrained by five. On the other hand, if they gave it voluntarily, that would be just fine on our neck of the woods.
If they gave it voluntarily, but this doesn't...
So, we can, we can, we can ask for it, but whether they give it or not, and I assume they would give it, but nevertheless, we couldn't require it.
So, so what you're saying is, they could request the approval of the police district, but if the police commander for the district chose not to do it, then it, there would be no, we couldn't make them do it, and the banquet hall thing couldn't make them do it, so, de facto, it's really at the whim, it would be at the whim of the district police commander.
We couldn't satisfy all the conditions that are listed here.
So, I thought we weren't going to go off on police...
Yeah, but, okay.
Body cameras.
Yeah, but...
All right, so, let me just say this, because I totally support that body cameras is a matter of opinion, and opinions change, and it looks like they're about to, because today is Tuesday, and that was on a Wednesday. So, I'm, I'm asking, and I'm saying that the owner has to do all these things, and hey, if the police commander says, "Drop dead," I don't, I don't, well, I'm not going to respond to your alert, well, then it looks like they can't have the event.
Okay.
Now, I mean, I'm not getting, I agree with you on the body camera, all that nonsense, but I want you to know that what happens in this case is, it's not, you can't get the use.
Yeah, wait a minute. I mean, what I'm, what I'm saying here is that, can we take, can the law department take five and try to word it to where it'll fit, fit the concern of Councilwoman Clark?
Well, Ms. Feinberg had a, had a great suggestion, if it's taken. Ms. Feinberg had a good suggestion, which is saying, what if, what if the owner just notifies the police of this requirement, notifies that these, you know, that...
Let's use it. No, I, I want this in here, and if the law department does not agree based on some whatever, that's about, I'm going to peel it up the line.
Yeah. Councilman Craft?
Yeah, I mean, the reason that I raise this is not just about the body camera issue, because we just had this very discussion the other day on the, on the late-night closing bill, where we met and were talking about the requirements on the late-night closing bill, and we had to take out all... bill, and we had to take out all of the references to the police commissioner, and all the role that the police commissioner had played previously in, in the approvals, in the appeals, and everything else, and turn that back over to the BMZA as a result of the opinion rendered in the body camera legislation. And it was made rather clear from that opinion, and then subsequently, in our meeting on the, on the late-night closing bill, that if we put in any legislation that mandated that the police department had to undertake any specific action, that it would, it would be interpreted as merely suggestive on our part, and that they clearly would have the option as to whether to do it or not, because we could not mandate how they were to act. So we could write whatever we wanted, but at the end of the day, it would be meaningless because we have no authority over them. Is that correct?
That would be correct. We're saying that you don't have the legislative authority to require it. The police chief or the police department can agree or not agree, you know, do what you want to do or not, but ultimately, this problem needs to be fixed in Annapolis, not here.
Okay. John, you want to respond to that, and then Councilman Henry?
I was just suggesting, I understand the problems posed by the current opinions. So the question really for the councils deciding, focus on the word approval. Who is it that gives the approval? You can certainly solicit the opinion of the commanders, as Paul indicated, and you can certainly require notification to them, so that that, and you can require proof of that notification.
I'm not asking them to do anything except what they want.
Well, I understand, but the question...
I'm responding to what commanders are asking for.
To get out of the legal problem, that councilwoman, or that legal position as it is right now, you may want to think about another entity who is actually doing the approving.
Besides the zoning board?
And if you have a different approver, then you're not giving that authority or requiring them.
No. No, I'm not going to, I've had enough of this nonsense. We are, we are the legislative body of the city of Baltimore. We are part of the Mayor and City Council Corporation. Who is the mayor's boss? I mean, the police commander's boss? Who is it? Who tells him what to do? The mayor. Is she not part of city government and of our corporation? Of course. It is ridiculous, and it is harmful. We have a late-night legislation that our communities desperately need, desperately, asked for by local police commanders. Make them close at midnight, and not be open all night as a place to attract trouble. Not everybody, but get a license if you want to operate beyond midnight, and you're not a liquor license, okay? The police commissioner is willing to work with us, to help us, to be the appeal process. So if a licensee says, is turned down because 10 people disagree with beyond midnight, the appeal would be the police commissioner. He's happy to be the appeal. It's his people that need this legislation. And we can't enact it because the law department says, I don't know what you're saying. The police commissioner is not in charge of himself. This is America. The mayor is his boss. We are part of that corporation. This is ridiculous. I'm not changing a word of this for the, for the law department.
Who can I...
And I will appeal it all the way to, I don't know where I have to, to keep this language in this, these findings of fact. It's ridiculous.
Oh, with you. Councilman Henry?
I, so, I spent an hour with Hillary and Elena on this, a couple weeks back, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm only going to fight so hard in terms of whether or not the city can direct the police department to do something. What I'm confused, what I am confused about is, even if the police department is a state agency and separate from city government, like the Liquor Board or something else, what I'm confused about is, I can see how that would prevent us from telling them what to do. I don't see how that prevents us from giving them authority. If we want to make some part of some process that we control, subject to the authority of an outside entity, I don't understand how that would be prohibited. So if, if, if the, if the police commissioner wants to do something like, in the process, you know, in the, in the context of what's actually before us, if, if the police commissioner wants to send a notice to the zoning administrator saying that there have been two disruptive incidents in the last six months at this location, why would it not be legal for us to then direct the zoning administrator, who is part of city government and works for us? Why wouldn't it be legal for us to say, if you get that communication from this outside agency, then this is what you have to do?
I don't have a problem with what you're saying, Councilman. I mean, the idea that we gave somebody, that we give the police department authority sounds reasonable to me. It's just a question of whether they want to, whether you can require them to exercise that authority.
And here's, and this is, and I think that this is the point that was consistent from both the situation with the late-night commercial operations and this one, which is, the police, if the police commissioner willfully wants to be involved in the situation, our decision to grant him authority, if he chooses to act, shouldn't be prohibited. If he then chooses not to use it, I can understand that we can't go yell at him in any kind of enforceable way, but if, I don't see how it would be illegal for us to offer him that ability.
Yeah, I'm unaware that anybody has said that that's illegal to do, to give, to give the authority.
We were told with the late-night commercial operations licensure, that we could not offer the police commissioner the role of where people could appeal to.
Okay, I'm going to, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I'm going to go with Councilman Craft, the Councilman Branch, and we're going to get off on the police issue, because we're here for zoning. Councilman Craft, then Councilman Branch. We're going to stick with five councilmen.
Right. The, in response to Councilman Henry, the issue was, it was interpreted as deployment, that we were in fact telling the commissioner or whomever how to deploy his forces or his men and women, because when we said, you must do this, whether it was, whether it was, take a report, or issue the license, or hear the appeal, or whatever, we were requiring the commissioner to set up a process. And when we did that, that required him to put people in certain places, and because we were requiring him to put him in certain places, that constituted deployment of the police officers. And we cannot tell him how to deploy the officers under both the charter and under the law. We can write the code that says, he can do this if he wants to do it, but if we write the code to say he can do it if he wants to do it, then that really is extremely misleading to the public, because it may not be illegal to write the code that says, commissioner can do it if he wants to do it, or she wants to do it, but, but, you know, if it's totally at the discretion of the commissioner, then you create problems for everyone, because then it's at the whim of that particular man, woman, whomever it may be. There is no true mechanism for enforcement, because no one can force that that particular law, or no one can require that that particular law be enforced, because it is at the sole discretion of whomever the commissioner may be at a given time.
Councilman, Councilman Branch, and then we're moving on to Councilwoman Clark, the rest of your amendments.
Yeah, well, that's, I'm done with community.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask this question, I'd like to pose this question then. As the, as, when I was working for the Department of Public Works, as a public works inspector, before we can issue a permit, every agency, including the police and fire department, had to sign off. So what is the difference between that now than what Madam Clark is asking now? I mean, every agency have to, I have to sign off before they could be issued a permit. What is the difference between what she's asking and what they're, what they're doing right now? It's already being operated. We cannot issue no permit unless the police department sign off on it. So what is the difference? Any permit, any permit, any permit, any street closure permit, anything. We had to go out two days before and make the public aware, or it wouldn't have been valid. Every agency have to sign off on it, including the police department.
You want to just respond to that, and then we're going to move on? You want to respond to that?
Yes, well, I mean, the question is, I mean, the police department, the police department can sign what they want to sign. The question is, if it's ever, if it's, if they ever contested, the law department's opinion would say that we would lose in a court of law.
I'm sorry, what? I didn't hear.
What I would say, Councilwoman, is that the, the police department, you can require the police department to do anything that you would like them to require them to do, but if it's ever contested, they say, no, we don't want to do that, then we're saying that, you know, they have, they, the law would be on their side, and that's, and so...
So what are they going to do? The police commissioner is going to sue the city council?
I don't think, chances are, chances are, these are, these are just, these things will never happen, but nonetheless, but nonetheless, the law is, what you can do, the question is, it's not what your legislative, the question is, you have a legislative mandate to do X, Y, or Z, but the question is, what does Annapolis give you the authority to do at the end of the day? So what we're saying is that Annapolis gives you lots of authority to do lots of different things legislatively, but in certain areas, they have chunked it out. Now, what you have with the police department is that we have the mayor who can fire the, who can fire the police chief at any time, if he or she does not follow the whims of what the mayor would like them to do. But the question legislatively of what you can do is limited by what the General Assembly gives you the authority to do. We would love to say that you can have control over the police, but we don't see that you have that authority. So that's as far as we go. The fact that we have situations in the past that we've said, the police have to sign off on a permit, okay, we've said that in the past, we've allowed that to happen in the past, the police have done it voluntarily, but...
Oh, how nice of them.
If push comes to shove, and we ever went to court, chances are, we would probably lose on that, although I can never possibly see the situation where we'd ever have push come to shove, and we go to court on that particular issue.
Well, we could move to reconsider the approval that is required by the city council of the appointment of the police commissioner.
Yeah, I'm not quite certain how the, where the police commissioner gets appointed from, but I know the mayor has control over the police commissioner at this point.
The mayor appoints, the council approves, and if they don't, he ain't the commissioner. Period, the end.
Mary Pym?
Yes.
Haven't done that yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Clark?
No, I did, I, I'm sorry. I'm done with banquet halls. I completed talking about the termination of the use and occupancy.
Page 214.
Yeah.
Well, before we go to that, does anyone else have any amendments on page 214? We are now on page 215. Councilwoman Clark, you have...
I do. This is under community-based alternative energy systems. This is about use standards for putting windmills, solar panel, in your residential property, on, in your residential property. And basically, I'm all for, I'm not sure, I don't have room for a windmill, but, I mean, I, I understand the spirit behind this, and it's really great. I would just amend that, so that they're not permitted uses. I mean, so, my amendment would require that the zoning board approve this description of community-based alternative energy systems. This isn't a solar panel on a private roof. This is about where you, let's see, where people get together who are adjacent to each other in a district, and they put up a whole system of alternative energy. Fine, but it's, right now, it's a permitted use. So I just would like it to be at least conditional by the zoning board, in all residential districts, in C1 slash C1 VC and C2 business districts, and in IMU, which is, we have a lot of in Ramington, and in I1 industrial district, I have a lot, that's where mine are, in my district. So it would, it would add language and, as Amendment 2 indicates, for a community-based alternative energy system, properties may share a solar, wind, or geothermal alternative energy system, including permission to install equipment along all properties. And I'm adding, conditional use approval is required by the zoning board in the districts I just mentioned. Secondly, and that's on page 215, line 17, page 215, line 25, after line 25, I add the same language for homeowners association property. And then, although we're not doing tables right now, Mr. Chairman, I do note for future reference, that I would go to the tables to make, to put, make these changes part of the tables for residential, and some of the commercial, and a couple of the industrial districts. Thank you.
Anyone else with amendments? Yeah, I mean, you want to respond to that? Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification. I think on format, the permissive or conditional is all handled in the tables, and for consistency, I would recommend it stay all in the tables, because if you start adding text lines that change the tables, you risk having the same information in two places and confusion. So I think these are clearer if they're simply table edits.
So you have no objection, but you just want them limited to tables?
Uh, yeah. Correct.
Thank you. I'll do it. That's fine with me, Mr. Chairman, I agree. Just tables.
Anyone else on page 215? From the audience, any of my colleagues?
Yeah, no, I'm, no.
Okay, we are now on page 216. Councilwoman Clark, you have an amendment?
Yes, I do, and I need to just talk about these for a minute, because I have not tediously repeated all the language, but I want you to get the gist of what I'm doing. I, I, I am proposing, and you've heard this before, and before, and before, that this thing called community-managed open space be divided into two categories. One is called community-managed open space, community gardens, permitted everywhere. And the second is community-managed open space, inclusive. Now, inclusive is... Now, inclusive is, excuse me, let me just make sure. So I haven't written every, the language. My intent is, community-managed open space, community gardens, is permitted everywhere. But community-managed open space inclusive requires a zoning board approval because this entire description that goes, of what this is and what you can do there and have there, livestock and everything else, would apply to inclusive. In other words, you could, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
All right, yeah.
So, what you see in the text now would really apply, are you guys, because I'm going to rely on you because I didn't write every word. What is in here now, on page 216 and ends on 217, would be describing community-managed open space inclusive. Community gardens doesn't even need a description, it's a community garden, it's basically, well, no, let me say this, community gardens are everything under lines five through 12. Five through 12, no livestock in a community garden. So it goes, that's a community garden. Inclusive is that and more. And I just, I mean, I just can't have people waking up one morning and seeing a couple goats next door, and they didn't even know what was going to happen. I mean... I mean, I'm not trying to be funny or anything, it's just, it's not funny if it's your constituent and they pick up the phone and say, Mrs. McGillicuddy has three goats and a vending stand and a compost heap next door. What are you going to do about it? And I want to be able to say, well, did...
I want to say, praise be to God.
Well, I want to be able to say, well, she needs zoning approval, or at least...
Goat.
Well, and the, and the compost heap.
I want to gee.
I mean, I think, I mean, we know the zoning board is not a hard thing for an applicant to get through, but at least it provides public notice, the goats are coming.
I think just for clarification, again, if the council chooses to break into uses, that's their prerogative, it should be defined, and I think it did come up when we talked about Title I, and then you could break this out, and then the rest would be table edits, so...
Okay, so basically...
So it would need to be a definition, which I think you put on the record in Title I.
Yeah, I did, so that's what I would like. The definition of community garden is to line 12. What I said, line five to 12, the inclusive definition is, is the whole definition. It's, it's what is now the definition of just plain CMOS. So that's it. That's what I would like to see, and then, yeah, I've said that. Okay, I'm done.
Councilman Henry.
Okay, first of all, I want to apologize to my colleague for laughing during her remarks. I was not laughing at your remarks as much as the, well, yes, the goat. So technically, I was, technically, I was laughing at your remarks, but I think you intended it as such. But the, I guess what I, what this prompts for me is it prompts me to say, now I need to know what all of the Baltimore City Health Department and Baltimore and Maryland Department of Agriculture regulations are for livestock, because this does not, this says livestock and animals, you know, they can happen, but, you know, does that mean that those regulations permit a herd of goats, or do those regulations already have their own limitations on them that would make some of our worries unnecessary?
Again, just as a matter of form, we left it this way as a cross-reference because at the time of drafting, they were reviewing and changing their standards, and they may do that again, so it seemed as a matter of form to do it by cross-reference rather than reiterate. I, you know, I don't want to misquote, you know, when we looked at it, I think it was four chickens or something like that, I don't remember the details.
Mr. Chairman, can we put a pin in this one where we make a point of having somebody from health available so that we can ask that? Because, you know, I would feel much better about approving this if I knew what those were actually, yeah.
Could have someone from the health department come to the next.
And our sustainability office, I think they've been working jointly on this issue.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark.
Councilman. No, I want to ask Councilman Henry.
Yeah.
Councilman Henry, are you saying that you want, are you not persuaded that zoning board should approve an inclusive, a community-managed open space that includes livestock? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, at this point, not knowing what the health department is inclined to permit, I am less enthusiastic about the idea that livestock could be kept in community-managed open space at all.
Oh, I...
Yeah, it's like, I know that there are situations where individuals can keep, you know, chickens or whatever, and I, yeah, yeah, that's it.
Councilman, we'll bring, we'll have someone from the health department.
I got, like, I don't, we got rats.
Those technically aren't my dogs.
Well, we're just going to ask the health department to come in with their regs about livestock.
Hey, Catherine Craft.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if I know the intention of Councilman Henry's request here, in the sense of, if we're going to get the health department in to, you know, just explain what those regulations are, would we be asking Department of Agriculture to express what their regulations are? We don't want to put the specific regulations into the code, I would think we wouldn't want to put them into the code. I mean, just as we wouldn't want to put the specific regulations regarding soil testing and things like that into the code.
So, I guess, if I, if I, if I could attempt to clarify, the, this, we have the ability to wordsmith. We don't always get the opportunity to wordsmith other agencies' regulations and policies. So I just want to hear what their policy is, because if their policy is acceptable, then this is acceptable. If their policy is unacceptable, yeah, if their policy is, if, if they have limitations that, in my opinion, are too high, then I would want to write stricter regulations into this that we can hardwire.
Right, now, let me ask a question, and again, I would assume, Councilwoman, if it, when you're talking about your, the community-managed, I mean, open face, inclusive, so if you had a large open space, you know, an acre of community open space, and you, and you had...
Acre goes fast when you've got goats.
You had an acre, an acre and a half, or maybe you had a square block, and you were using a portion of it for gardens or whatever, but you had another portion that really was just sort of growing wild, and you wanted to use goats for lawn management, right? And you wanted to keep the goats on site, right? Would that be include, would you seek inclusive on that, or if you wanted to have chickens, if you wanted to have chickens on site if you were doing fruiting?
Yeah, we want at least the zoning board to, I mean, I've got chicken, I've got pigeon coops now that, well, okay, but, I mean, it's not like I don't know, and we don't all know, what problems we deal with already.
The only answer to that is we'll bring in the health department in to ask questions. It's only going to take a few minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we'll bring in the health department, but I am very concerned about, I mean, I think making inclusive have to be approved by the zoning board, at least there's a sign up that tells people what's coming.
You got it.
No, I would want it inclusive. You've got goats, you go to the zoning board. You take them to the zoning board before somebody calls me about the goats next door, and I can't do anything.
I get it, I think, okay. What else do you, Councilwoman Clark?
Um, excuse me, I'm...
216 and 217, right? When you're inclusive, yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, I don't come back again till 218 with drive-through facilities.
Just, I think I can, the page 218, the question about the drive-through facilities...
Before we go into 218, I want to make sure anyone from the audience has any amendments or questions to the amendments on page 216 and 217? No? Okay.
I do have one. I don't have an amendment, but I have a question.
On what?
Daycare homes, child or adult.
Where are you at?
I'm on page, I'm sorry, page 217. I'm on line 24.
Okay, that's 14310. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, 14310. I just can't, I didn't have time to go backwards and forwards with the existing zoning code. Are there any maximum numbers here, depending on the size of your property, like, is there a square footage back in the bulk regs?
Yes, I believe it's the same, we didn't change, I want to say it's six or eight. We did not change those definitions, and they're in the definitions, the difference between a home-based daycare and a center.
Yeah, I understand.
And where their permitted or conditional varies.
So, so, wait a minute, so daycare homes, homes, child or adult, somewhere in here, there's a limit on...
Yes.
On how many you can have in each one of those?
Yes, it'll take me a minute, but I can find that for you. But it is similar to what we have today. This is not a recommended change particularly.
Okay, so, it's eight in child daycare, right? And you can go to the zoning board to increase it?
Yes, it's eight, it's eight, we kept the eight.
Where are you?
In the definitions. Daycare center, home, child, page 21, is eight for either adults or children, and then if you're larger than that, it becomes a center, which is similar to today, and it's similar to state licensing.
I'm sorry, I just, this is the kind of thing, daycare, home, adult...
Page 21 is the number.
Up to eight. Daycare, child, up to eight, right? And then, if you go above eight, you become a center and you kick into those requirements?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good, thanks.
All right, thank you.
And then, I think a point of clarification on 218, if I understand the councilman's notes, it's more of a question on drive-through facilities.
Really, I'm so confused.
They are separate use, they're not, we didn't do the accessory, so they are conditional, they are not permitted anywhere, they're conditional, and it's by the zone as opposed to by the use. So they are conditional in C1, C2, and, I mean, C, I'm sorry, not C1, conditional in C2, C3, and C4, which are heavier commercial areas, and not in downtown. So what we, the reason we did that is because, you know, the nature of drive-throughs change, you know, at one point, you just had banks, and then you had restaurants, and, you know, other types of, now there's drive-through pharmacies, things like that. So the use is pulled out separately as a use, and it is conditional with the detailed standards required on page 218.
Okay, here's, here's my concern, if I'm reading this right, and this is one of these, there are three of them like this, where I just couldn't get my head around them, but somebody picks up the phone and says, hey, Mary Pat, what about, whatever, we all need to know what we're talking about, and I don't. Okay, so here's my concern.
Give us the page and line.
Oh, I'm on page 218, lines three to 11, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So this is what we're talking about. All right, so here's what it says, drive-through facilities. It says it's a separate use rather than accessory to a principal use. Well, you can't have a drive-through of nothing. A drive-through doesn't exist, just hear me out. A drive-through is always accessory to something, you're not just driving through to get to the other side of the street like the chickens.
Going to have a principal use, that's what...
Well, that means it's accessory to something, but that, what this says is, it's a principal use, and then it says it's permitted if it's, if it's connected to restaurants, including carryouts.
No, it says only permitted for those uses.
Yeah, I know, it's only permitted as, basically, an accessory use to three things. Drive, all right, restaurants, including carryout food shops, banks, financial institutions, and retail goods establishments, which is pretty generic, if they don't, if they don't have alcohol, which most of them really don't. All right, so, then they're become permitted. Oh, yeah, well, wait a minute, so...
I get back to the table, the table...
I did.
The table calls out drive-through facilities as a use, and they are conditional in the C2, 3, and 4, and in addition to being conditional, they must meet this page of standards. They must be for retail goods, or, and they have to have the stacking, the impact on traffic, lighting, et cetera.
I know that, yeah, I'm familiar with the logistical requirements. Well, what I would like to say is that they're, that they're not permitted, they're eligible. So in other words, uses, all right, lines seven to eight, seven and eight, I would say that the uses are eligible for, the uses below are eligible for a drive-through facility as a conditional use approved by the zoning board. In other words, if you're a restaurant without liquor, if you're a financial institution, if you're, what's the other one, a restaurant, you are eligible for the drive-through facility as a conditional use by the zoning board. Right now, conditional, drive-through facilities are generally, now, you've got to go to the zoning board to get them. I don't want these institutions all permitted without checking back with people in all these categories of uses. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, this becomes an accessory use that becomes permitted...
I think it would be addressed if you changed on line seven, the word permitted to uses eligible.
Oh, yeah, that's what I got.
And that would take care of your concern.
It's just a verbiage, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'll take it. Thank you.
You got it. Councilman, Councilman Henry?
Thank you. Just indulge my curiosity, given those three categories, restaurants including carryouts, financial institutions, and retail goods establishments without alcohol sales, what isn't allowed... isn't allowed that has a drive, that has a drive-through currently anywhere in the city? I mean, yeah, okay, like, what else, what else would count? What, I mean...
There's nothing left except the church driving worship.
I think the point is that we wanted to be, the point is to be relatively flexible on the uses, but to be much more focused on where the drive-through goes, so it's limited to the three zones that are more auto-oriented and it must meet these standards.
Okay.
Because what we're seeing is the kind of businesses that want or don't want a drive-through over the last forty years have sort of gone up and down. So that really isn't the issue as much as the impact of the drive-through physically on the area and on the street configurations. And that's what this focus is on. And being conditional to the board because those street configurations can be unique. So they're not all created equally. And that's why it's important to pull out that use as drive-through regardless of what the business is, to look at that.
But, Councilman Henry?
This is where I would have to go back and look at the current zoning code. In several cases, though, currently, the drive-through use would be conditional by ordinance now.
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to call the committee's attention to the fact that this might be another one of those things that when we are restoring the concept of conditional by ordinance...
I'm prepared to accept your amendment.
This would be another one, but I, but perhaps we fix that in the table more than we worry about this.
I think for the ease of discussion, I would recommend doing that with the tables. And the council agrees that there'd be the conditional by board, conditional by ordinance, you go down in alphabetical order and indicate that way.
You already have it.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, my point is this, you're making these things only, they're only, that, what that does is you take the word permitted out and therefore you don't have drive-through Because otherwise, if you're, otherwise, if they would, every place you had a restaurant, a financial, a retail, as the principal use, you could have permitted a drive-through.
Right.
Okay, now we changed that, so you have to get, still go to an ordinance to get a drive-through because a drive-through is like a very, it's invasive of a community and if people are going to get it, they need to have a process. Okay.
We got it.
Thanks.
Anyone, anyone else on page two eighteen? I think, I think you're done. You're finished.
Yeah, well, I did note to myself, I didn't write it down, that is, table ten dash three oh one, we have to delete drive-through facility as a principal use category. So maybe I should...
Laurie?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a table item.
Yeah, it is a table item.
Seven, table ten, three oh one. Is there a problem with that?
I'm sorry, I did it.
Yeah, she's deleting drive-through facility, just saying it's a principal use category. What's planning?
We would, we would want to leave it as a principal use, we have no objection to making it conditional by ordinance, and I think by changing line seven to use the word eligible, that would provide the clarification.
Got it.
All right.
Oh, God.
We are now on page two nineteen, Councilwoman Clark, you have amendment on page two...
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay. Amendment, all right, so this is about fraternities and sororities. Now, I don't know why, let me say this, it's on page two nineteen, lines nineteen to twenty-five. I got them and I need help.
I'm very...
And you...
I'm sorry.
No, you have them too, a lot. Okay, do you?
I...
Okay. Now, I am recommending that we delete something that I don't understand why it was adopted. So if you have an explanation, and I'm persuadable on this, but here's what I would like to delete, and then I have additions. I would like to delete location. A fraternity or sorority house must be located within a thousand feet of the educational facility. First, that's my district, that's all my neighborhoods, right there, all around the educational institution. So from my perspective, that's saying, hey, everybody, push them right in around Wyman Park Drive, Wyman Parkway, Charles Street, actually, St. Paul, you know, surround us. And that would be a good thing. Well, it's, it's not a good thing.
Again, I think, I think that would be a table item matter to make them either prohibited or...
Well, it's in the text.
Require the ordinance. I think that the issue on the definition was this was based on our general research and recommendations, that you don't want them further away than a thousand feet.
Well, we got them. And we don't really...
I don't think there's any further away than a thousand feet from an institution, that's about four blocks.
You've got them in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, that's, Councilwoman, that's like three football fields.
Right. I think that if the council desires to be more restrictive on these uses, that that should be in the table to say which zones you either want, no...
Oh, I did that, I've already got that done. So, okay, so I'm looking at the draft that was written by planning and amending, or proposing amendments. So if that belongs in the table, fine, but I don't want it because I don't see the benefit of it.
I think the...
All right.
Wait, wait.
Yeah.
Councilman Henry?
So, so this is one of the ways in which the limit can be beneficial, which is, in my district, we have houses that are now being occupied by college students who are, where the neighborhood is quite a distance from either of the colleges that the students are attending.
Correct.
In all, I mean, in all fairness, when somebody buys a house, when a regular, you know, non-student, but when somebody is settling in a neighborhood near a college, there is some measure of understanding and expectation when they purposely buy a house next to a college, that there are going to be college students around and that it's not going to come as a surprise to them when there are college students. Not saying how they should behave. But when, but I have situations where I have college housing now in neighborhoods that are nowhere near colleges and where the neighbors had no reason to expect that they would ever be living near college students in an organized fashion. So this, this limitation would be helpful where we have fraternity, sorority houses for Towson that are miles from Towson.
I'll take it out. I withdraw the, I, I got you, I know the situation.
Now, we got that, now you're on...
I have taken a stab at adding a phase-out provision to fraternity houses.
Is that amendment nine?
Yes, it is. It's amendment nine, it comes after, on page two nineteen, after line twenty-five. For zoning enforcement purposes, a facility housing college and university undergraduates may be presumed to operate as a fraternity or a sorority if acknowledged as such by the college or university with which its local chapter is affiliated. In other words, that's sufficient presumption that you are a fraternity, okay, for legal purposes. And then unless, unless you were established before the nineteen seventy-one zoning code as a fraternity and you kept being there as a fraternity since, or unless you went to the zoning board lately, since then, and got a conditional use approval as a fraternity or a sorority since nineteen seventy-one, you're illegal. You don't belong where you are if you're in a residentially zoned property. And either get your approval or get out of that within two years of your, of the enactment of this code. Go away.
All right. Before planning answers that, Councilman Henry and Councilman Yea...
We really have to be careful, I guess, with the language. I have at least four or five fraternity, they're, I consider them fraternity houses, but they, they don't live in them and maybe that's the difference, okay? And I guess that difference should be put there in writing?
We, we have it in writing...
It would be in the definition section, Councilwoman Middleton, and I think it's on the record to create a separate use for the non-residential fraternities. So you need to, it's defined, it would be a different use, and then you would say in the tables where you want that new use permitted or conditional, that sort of thing.
Right, because I, I have the deltas, the AKAs, the zetas, and then it's the alpha house too, on Garrison.
You, this is carefully worded, undergraduate, it should say residential occupancy. No, no, a resident, all right. I've been through this.
Okay.
And we've separated fraternity, sororities into undergraduate residential...
She's sleeping and eating.
And adult, non-residential, for the deltas, the AKAs.
The microphone, so we...
The deltas, the AKAs, et cetera, et cetera, that, they are now categorized with lodges.
Okay.
Definition of lodges, you now...
That operate for community functions and things.
Yeah, because Angela Gibson grabbed me practically on day two of all this stuff.
Okay.
And we worked out how to make a distinction between the adult, non-residential fraternities and sororities, which are fine, and they're okay, and they're not this. And these guys, which are, are, you know, they're residential, they're undergraduates.
Got you. Thank you so much.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so, Ms. Floyd, you want to respond? You have regards to that conversation? Yeah, go ahead, come up.
Thank you, Chairman Reisinger. Joan Floyd, President of Remington Neighborhood Alliance. I have a question regarding the combination of amendments, and I hope Mr. Willis can address it.
Who's your question to, regards to who? So you got a question?
I have a question, I'll tell you the question in a second, I'm hoping Mr. Willis can address it. The question is, if we're, if we're successful in getting the table amendment that has been discussed, that was put forth earlier, which I believe was taking it out of the seven and the eight.
Yes.
And the one thousand foot limitation remains in the code. If those two things happen, could we end up in a situation in the future where there's an argument that it is, it is too constrained and there, it's impossible to set up a new fraternity house, which could then potentially force something to happen that we don't want? Like, right now, you know, with the a thousand foot thing in place, in other words. That's, that's my question, it's a legal question, it's for Mr. Willis, really.
Good question.
It is a permitted use in the educational zones, which are pretty large in the city, so that may address that.
I, no, that wouldn't address my concern at all, because my concern is about what's happening off campus. Obviously, that's what we're talking about, is what's happening off campus. The question, I'll, I can, I'll certainly be happy to repeat it. If the table is amended to take the fraternity houses out of seven and, R7 and R8, which is what we were supporting.
It's in.
And if the one thousand foot limitation remains in the code, could it, could we find ourselves in a situation in the future where we're challenged because we're constrained, because you can't find a place to put it?
Your thousand feet and, and the zoning won't let you anyway.
Yes. And I'm concerned about that, I'm raising that right now.
I just took it out of my recommendations because my colleague, I know exactly what he's talking about, he's got Towson students living in fraternities and all, living in Lake, the Lake Evesh...
Use the microphone.
Because, because the zoning in Baltimore County, still part of Maryland and the United States of America, limits residency, somehow they can do that, and so they can't locate there anymore, and they come as close to the boundary of the city as possible, and so a thousand feet would apply to them because they're not within a thousand feet of Towson or wherever. They'd have to, they'd be illegal.
Councilwoman Henry?
And they will have to move to somewhere that is within a thousand feet, and they will have to find a zone in which they can move. So I'm, I'm asking this question, one, that's one of the reasons I'm asking this question is, will we find ourselves in a position where we've said, we're making a one thousand foot perimeter, but not actually giving someone the opportunity within their perimeter? And that's what I was hoping we could address.
So, good, we take out the thousand.
No, I, I, I think I am following your question. Two, two things I would say, first of all, if I understood it right, you have to be within a thousand feet of your educational institution. So if you're a fraternity from Towson and we, and we say, well, you can't live here in Lake Evesh because you're more than a thousand feet from your educational institution, they can't relocate to within a thousand feet of some other educational institution. So it's not like they're going to all flock down to Charles Village to be close to Hopkins if they're not Hopkins fraternities. The second thing I would say is that a thousand feet is a long way.
A street, a street football field.
Yeah, I mean, at that...
Thousand feet?
Yes, okay, I, thank you for putting it in the proper context. So, 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 I mean, a thousand feet from any point along the edge of the educational institution is going to be a huge amount of area for them to theoretically locate within. And I, yeah, so I don't think you're going to have to worry that anybody is going to argue that that's too small of an area for us to fit it.
No, it's, it's not the idea that it's too small, it is quite a large area. In fact, when we, we looked at it, we saw how much of our neighborhood it was, which is one of the reasons we wanted the R7 and the R8 out of this, because it would have, it would have opened up so much of our neighborhood. So again, that's, that question is if we take the R7 and the R8 out and then it becomes restricted to us, you know? That's my que, that's my issue that I'd like to have addressed, I was hoping, Mr. Willis.
I think you have amendments in for that?
Yeah, those amendments have been presented already by me for that R7 and R8 not having fraternities. It was one of the first mail I was getting from people in Remington. So I put that in right up front and it's very important to me. So I hope this council will approve that amendment to the tables and to the text.
And again, because of all that, that's why I'm posing the question I'm posing today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will we, will we end up in that position? I would, I would hope it could be addressed, my question.
Duly, duly noted.
Could it be addressed?
She, you...
I'm not a lawyer.
I, I was hoping Mr. Willis, because he is here, could, could we be in a position, as, what I'm asking is, could we find ourselves in a position in the future where we could, they were arguing that there's no...
It's, it's duly noted, we're going to, okay. You want to, do you want to address that?
I think I understand the question, but I think there's, we can't really make a judgment until we see what the final language is going to be that the council's going to do. I mean, it's, we're, we're not there yet, we've got the language issues between the types of fraternities and sororities that Councilman Middleton was doing at the Planning Department wants to, there's still a lot of work to do on this section.
Right.
But I understand your concern.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Anyone else on page two eighteen? No? Okay, we are now on page two nineteen. No? Okay, we are now on page 219. Councilwoman Clark?
Wait a minute.
14, 219, 14-314, gas stations.
Gas stations.
Page, line 26.
Yes. I told you there were three cases where I was like, I can't get my head wrapped around something. This is one of them, okay? So let me just, let me just tell you what I'd like to do. First of all, this is all about gas stations. It's use standards. Now, amend on page 220, go to lines 913, 9 to 13. Okay. I don't want gas stations to be accessory to anything else. I want them to stand alone for approval. Right now, in my district, at this very second, rumors are flying about some carryout place that wants to add pumps out beside it. And I want that to have to go through the zoning board. At least the zoning board. Not just hello. So I'm moving to delete the lines 9 to 13 that say, "Gas stations as accessory to service and repair establishments." I'm taking out, "A gas station may be considered accessory to a motor vehicle service and repair establishment." In that case, this gas station is subject to the requirements of both this section and 14-326, "Motor vehicle service and repair major." Reminder of this subtitle, no. You know, the, the, who stands alone at the end of that song? The cheese stands alone. We need a gas station to be a principal use. And so I took that out. And then later on in this chapter, where we get back to when we're talking about motor service stations, I, I take it out again. Gas stations should be principal uses. You should have to get permission to put in something that we call a gas station, even if it's co-locating with some other principal use.
We have no objection to that amendment. And I would like to make note of, I haven't been going through all the Planning Department or Planning Commission recommendations on the record, as you already have them. But there was one of particular note. It's labeled 14-2. And the commission, after hearing testimony, recommended an additional standard be added that would limit the number of pumps for any gas station that was adjacent to residentially zoned property or residentially used property, so that we could not... And, and the testimony that came to the commission was about one of these very large gas stations being proposed, you know, next to, the backside was residential. And so they recommended that if there was adjacent residential that is touching, it be limited to eight pumps.
Basically, what, what, yes. What I'm finding is, and I've been, is that there are places where gas stations are not permitted, they're conditional, where later on, the motor vehicle service stations are. So in other words, unless we do this, if we make them accessory, they kind of slide in under the, the umbrella of the motor vehicle service, whatevers. Thank you.
Anything else on page 220? Page 220?
Regarding the, the issue of adjacency with the gas station and the, and the residential, something I would like the committee to consider. Wouldn't it make sense to have a resident, have a, have a distance requirement so that we weren't putting gas stations immediately adjacent to residential property? Doesn't that seem like a forward-looking thing to do for the new code?
So your recommendation is that there, that we consider a buffer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ah, gas stations buffer.
All right.
How about that football field thing? How about that 1,000 feet?
Okay, consider residential gas station buffer, okay. All right. Okay, anybody else on page 220? Page 221? Anybody on 221? You don't have anything there.
No, I don't.
221, page 222? Anybody on 222? This is landfill industrial, 14-318.
I have one comment I'd like to make. I don't have amendments.
Okay.
Every place landscape manual is mentioned, we should also add, as approved by city council ordinance. It's mentioned now, it starts here, and it gets mentioned a few other times. Okay?
Councilwoman Henry?
I also do not have an amendment to offer in terms of specific wording at this time. But I would like to put on the record that this would be another area that I think we should be considering changing to conditional by ordinance, live entertainment or dancing.
Oh, okay.
For when we get to the tables.
Okay, so, let's do one thing at a time here. So everywhere that landscape manual is mentioned?
As it, as enacted by, as enacted by city council ordinance. The first place in this chap title is page 222, line 26.
Okay.
It happens, I just got tired of typing. I'm just, every time, and making an amendment out of every one of those things. It's tedious enough to do this. And Lord knows, tedious enough to have to listen to it.
All right. And then Councilwoman Henry?
So I...
Section 14.
319.
319, conditional ordinance, conditional use ordinance?
And I, and I guess it would require a small text amendment on page 223, lines 9 and 10, replacing the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals with the city council.
Okay.
City council.
But I think that would be the extent of the text amendment.
It's a big one.
Okay. Ms. Feinberg? Question? And I didn't have an opportunity to this. These definitions and all these references to live entertainment and dancing, are they exactly the same as the definitions included, contained in the liquor laws?
I don't know. The, the, first of all, these are not definitions. These are standards that would be applied.
Okay, sta... Standards, are they the same standards as the liquor board requires?
I do not know.
Okay. I think that they have to be the same. We can't have them be... We, we had this once before where live entertainment was defined as one thing in the liquor board, and live entertainment was defined as another thing in the zoning code. And, and, right, so...
I think you would maybe want the definitions to be the same, but I think the city may want to reserve the right to, in their zoning code, to have their own standards, because that would be the place that you could...
Then make them more stringent or something.
Be more stringent or more customized to the city. I, I agree on definitions, but, and I, and I do believe the definitions are, are the same. And I think, I think to the councilwoman's point about conditional by ordinance, we made the decision in drafting this code because the then-council had very recently changed their approach to live entertainment, to make it conditional to the board in new set of zones with the revocation provision. And at the time that this was introduced, that had, was only a year or two old. So we did not propose changing that. That was a new thing, you know? And so we, that's, that was just the, the background on that piece.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
If I, if I could just follow up just a little bit. I think I'm on the same page as Ms. Feinberg in saying that I agree with you that all of the standards that are in the liquor board's process should be incorporated, but we may want to go further in some cases than the liquor board does.
Right, and that was my, that was my whole point, that they be matched wherever they were. And if we wanted to add additional ones, we could. But that, you know, that they be parallel so that we not have them in conflict. Anything else on 223? 224?
I'm, I'm afraid I do have something on. I'm going to have to leave pretty soon.
We're not, well, we're almost.
We're not going to get to that.
No, no, okay. Mr.? Okay, back to you.
Mr. Chairman.
I've got to, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I have constituents here with an amendment that I don't know if we're going to get that far. Okay, I'm sorry. You know, I'm sorry, but I'm, I don't mean to stand between, all right. Okay, my next amendment is on page 226.
226.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, before you go on 226, anybody have anything on 224?
Wait a minute, yeah.
Nobody on 224? Anyone have anything on page 225? Nothing on page 225? There we are on page 226.
Okay, as promised, when I was talking about gas stations, page 226, line 7, oh, I, I have a typo. Wait a minute, what is it?
Well, you got to go back to page 225. 14-326, motor vehicle service and repair.
Here's where we're talking about motor vehicle service and repair, major and minor. All right, so this is the umbrella provision about them. And then they break down by ta, the tables break them down, okay? These, these two majors and minors, okay? Now, page 226, I, my amendment would delete from line 7 to 11, no, 7 to 10, pardon me. That's a 10, 7 to 10. So it gets rid of where it says, "Gas stations. Motor vehicle service and repair shops may also include gas stations as an accessory use." No. These gas stations must also comply with yada, yada, yada. They are not an accessory use, they are a principal use. We will take them as separate things. I'm done there.
So 225 and 226, you're?
Yep.
You're, you're okay with your amendments? Anyone else on page 225 or 226? Okay, now we are on page 227. Councilwoman Clark, let me see, do you have any?
I do, I have a big one, and I have constituents with one.
Okay. Page 227.
Neighborhood commercial establishments. I have spoken with you all at a public hearing about this before. For this moment, let me say, move to delete the entire section 14-328. Take them out. I've already been through it with everybody, and when we get around to voting, I'll go through it again. I just don't want, I, I already talked about it. I need my constituents to be able to talk.
Okay. Any, any of my colleagues have any amendments want to, want to? No? Okay.
What, you don't want to take it out?
I don't want to take it out.
We have, is there any?
That's possible, I just...
We're going to, Councilwoman, we're going to...
I need them.
We're going to take testimony from the audience. So anyone want to, regards to amendments? On page, what, 227? And 228?
I had a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Ed Hopkins, on neighborhood commercial. The way it's set up, suppose I wanted to put a photography studio in a, in a house that met all, met all the standards for neighborhood commercial. I have an art studio for a year, sell it. Now, the place is neighborhood commercial. Could the next owner put a restaurant in there without going back to the zoning board?
Planning?
That would be a change to conditional use. And no, that would have to go to the board as a change to con...
Conditional use is neighborhood commercial. Why would he have to go back?
But that would be a change to, within the conditional use. That would still be considered a change. If, you know, if the council wants to make it clearer that you can't switch amongst them, that's fine. But our interpretation, as drafted, is, the first is a conditional use. It's just like today. If you have a gas station and you want to add pumps to it, it's still a gas station, but you have to go back to the board for a change to that conditional use.
Is that non-conforming?
No, it's a change to conditional use.
So, so the intent is to make these, each separate conditional uses within the larger grab bag?
If you were to do anything substantive to change it, that would be subject to the board's approval.
Okay, I got it, okay.
And if that's not clear enough in here or in the conditional use section, it's certainly the intent. And, you know, we welcome a line that says to change from one to the other is, requires board approval.
You might make that clearer.
That's fine.
Councilman Henry?
Okay, I, I was just going to say that in a situation like the one you're, you can, you can, in a situation like the one you're describing, if you're, if, if you and your neighbors are comfortable with your use there, but not comfortable with the prospect of other commercial uses in that location, then you just shouldn't be zoned for this. You should just stay residentially zoned and be a non-conforming use. And just, that, I mean, that's why I think this is more of a map question than a definition question.
Again, this is, as proposed, it is not a, a map issue. This is intended to address those unique buildings in our residential neighborhoods that are not residential character buildings, that are, for the most part, not suited for residential uses. Many of them are old churches. You know, the best example is the church in Hamden that wanted to become an office. This is really focused on the, the type of, of building. One suggestion for the council to consider is you could simply, rather than calling it neighborhood commercial, you could make the list of uses, conditional uses in the residential zones, you know, as separate line items, rather than bulking them together as one type of conditional use. That may be something to consider, Councilman Brant.
May I say something to?
Then I have to use Councilwoman Brant, because she has it. Councilwoman Henry, you finished?
Well, I, I was going to let her go first if she wanted to respond to Ms. Feinberg.
First of all, I...
Use the microphone.
To be perfectly honest with you, Mr. Chairman, I have got to leave very soon. I can't do this now. So I would like to say that if, I mean, I don't think this is well thought through or a good idea. But as with RMU and, and DMU, which is another whole category of this kind of idea, make them a map issue. Do a... Do an overlay on the properties, I know exactly the properties in one community that everybody is worried about, go through a, a map process where you designate, you overlay them the way you do with an IMU and a D-
The, the problem with the-
A DMU and a, and a, but don't just-
The problem with the mapping approach-
Well, I don't, I think we don't, I don't approve these, and I would like to begin with these next time, I just need everybody who might not be able to be here to get in their amendment.
Okay, the, the one problem with the mapping approach is, it would be counter to what Mr. Viall said, in other words, if you mapped it, let's say C1 for the corner store, or, or something along those lines, then any use in C1 would go, be able to go in-
Overlay.
-without any, you know, permissions or conditional use, and it would not take into consideration the uniqueness of many of these buildings, and that is the reason why we did not want to be more permissive, which would be the mapping approach.
Okay, I get it.
Okay.
Who, anyone else from, Ms. Floyd and Ms. Chen, and then we're gonna conclude or recess.
While the councilwoman's still here.
Go ahead, we gotta, I got two meetings going on here.
While the councilwoman's still here, we had, the reference was to the earlier hearing, but also, at that earlier hearing, you had an, the councilwoman had an alternate set of amendments that in case, the, in case deleting neighborhood commercial did not succeed, there were required findings that were introduced, and we had actually endorsed those as the alternative, even though we're, we prefer the deletion. My question right now, today, is, are those, is that alternate set of amendments still, still something you, you have as a proposal?
I'm sorry, I, I'll be honest with you.
I brought them.
I've gotta go back, I don't remember what they are.
I have them in my hand.
Okay.
So I can submit them now, and-
Yeah, they're good. We'll have copies made of them, and-
I'm sorry, they're closing several schools in my district.
I understand, and I, I just wanted to, to make sure that that was said, and that that was also something that we would be interested in if not the, you know, if the deletion didn't succeed.
Okay, duly noted. Ms., Ms. Chen, or whoever, whoever, okay. And then, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm Ryan Flannan, I'm the Vice President of the Greater Remington Improvement Association, and you have, Mrs. Chen's amendment mimics ours as well. Neighborhood commercial has been an issue that has been, I can't, between neighborhood commercial and IMU, I don't think any topic has been more discussed in Remington in the last couple of years, as far as zoning goes, and we've reviewed it a million times, and I just see that, you know, there are numerous vacant and occupied corner properties in Remington, and the problem with making it a map issue is that, you know, while many of those properties were properly zoned as C1, even vacant ones, like, there are just so many in the neighborhood, I mean, they're not everywhere, but they're on the corners, that they were just missed in the map, so the map did not include certain buildings that are clearly commercial and build, and, clearly commercial and build and intend, and have always been used commercially, currently cannot be. And so this creates a double vacancy, where a building that is vacant cannot be made into its previous use, and so it is harder and it costs more to convert it to residential, so we have sort of this increasing level of vacancy on some of our corners, and on my block specifically, so we view, I know that my organization and many of my neighbors view neighborhood commercial as a very, you know, flexible and important category, and we hope it is preserved in its entirety, with the only modification being a lowering of the required square footage, because as it is currently written, and I believe, I believe the Planning Department has mentioned that this was almost a mistake, that all the, the minimum square footage for the non-residential uses in all the residential categories is 3,000 square feet, even though there are almost, I don't think any houses in the R8 district are 3,000 square feet, so we have a category right now, as it's written, that can't exist. So I hope that while there is more disgust about it, that we have, if it does exist in the future, we have to lower the square footage requirements, because otherwise, we just wouldn't have it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time, and-
I mean, we fight it out, but, right, it, yeah.
Yeah, and if we want to have another session, I'll come to that one too, and talk about it again.
Yeah, I mean, I, Mr. Chair, I would like to take a few minutes-
Gotta use the microphone, Council-
I would like to take a few minutes, the next time we meet, to start with this, so I apologize to you that I'm not really prepared on this, except to, to lead.
Well, it's duly noted, we could, we could do that, but we're gonna, we're gonna end, I think, you have, you wanna add to that, or?
Oh, no, 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 I was just noticing the other-
Council, Councilman Warren Brant, you want to add to this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Laurie, is this the situation that's going on in the district that I'm in now, with the 1200 block of Rose Street, where the church want to convert it to something else, and then, I mean, it, everything went good through planning, and all of a sudden, the law department said that, God, no, it, it-
I'm familiar with the question, Councilman, 1209 Rose Street. Actually, that's another part of the zoning code which we recommended changing, and that is on conversions from a single family to multifamily. This neighborhood commercial would be very important, though, for the 13th District, because you do have a number of vacant buildings that are residentially zoned, but in the nature of the building are commercial, you know, whether it's a storefront, or a, you know, factory-type of building, and this neighborhood commercial would provide for the reuse of those buildings. And, so it is important, but it's not the 1209 Rose Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got it, yeah. We're gonna end with Councilwoman Henry, and then we're gonna-
Yes.
All right, I get the last word, excellent. So I'm gonna take this opportunity, one last time today, to bang the conditional by ordinance drum, and say that this is a great example of a situation where, when in one district you have to worry about protecting your neighborhood from uses, but in another neighborhood, you need to be able to access those uses, this is where it's only a mapping issue in that if you mapped the whole area as neighborhood commercial, but then make all of these uses conditional by ordinance in that area, then each neighborhood has the flexibility it needs-
Map it.
...to deal with its problems.
Because, may I say one thing? In my district-
I knew I wouldn't get the last word.
I've got, I've got both, I've got people-
You didn't get the last word, and Councilwoman Henry?
Oh, yeah, the last word.
We, okay, uh, our next work, our next work session will be, will be announced, we don't have a date for it because of the holidays, and I want to thank everyone for attending today's Land Use and Transportation Committee work session. What I ask is, please look around you to make sure whatever you brought with you, take with you. Thank you very much.